I would like to welcome you all to the voting meeting, January voting meeting of the Exorcution School District Board of Directors. And announced that we were in executive seat prior to the meeting on a personnel issue. First item would be a report from Technology Section.
Wow, it's unusual going first. Wonderful. Mr. Phil? The first part of my agenda really is to talk about the one-to-one. And a lot of our time this summer, well, spring, summer and fall has been dedicated to the one-to-one and getting it off the ground. We have our ninth grade fully implemented with devices. As a report, we've had, you know, we've had damage, very, very minimal damage. One of the things that we've really found is that the machine purchase is a little over engineered. It has a hook of like plastic or glass over top of the screen. And that part is actually not a serviceable part. So the screen is like 60 bucks, but to replace that piece of glass that protects the screen, it's like 170 bucks. So we were in conversations with Dell this morning to figure out how we can get that part, you know, or maybe go with a different vendor for our second round of Chromebooks. However, we're very happy with this device. A big part of this success has been Mr. Wilczek. Dan has been not only doing all the presentations to our parents in October, Dan has met individually with folks, some new folks that are starting. He's also meeting with a lot of teachers and pushing into classrooms and helping them to model successful lessons in utilization of the technology. Some of the other things that are exciting with the one with technology, we have been doing a lot of updates in the elementary school and middle school as well. Our population of Apple, iOS, iPads, iPods, iPhones is about 600 right now. And will be growing with somebody from the foundation. We're using them for a lot of different station kind of purposes where teachers will work with three different activities and there are specific apps that they're using. Our junior high and our STEM facilities were upgraded, obviously with Project Leadway. We upgraded the labs at the high school, but we also upgraded the tech STEM labs at the junior high school to start allowing those teachers to utilize Autodesk and Venner, which is a good platform software for building a STEM curriculum. We've also been working, Dan has been working in integrating the new math curriculum and helping support the technology components of the new math curriculum in the elementary and secondaries. This year, we moved to a new communication platform, ParentLink. And I included some photos of what the ParentLink app looks like. The ParentLink app is fully available now in the Apple and Android stores. And it's a very nice app. We're spending a lot of time to make sure that we're pushing content through our website to get there. There's news, notifications, the district calendar is located there. When Dr. Martin would do an early dismissal or a ParentLink message to the community, it'll also push notifications to the phones. So folks that may not be a part of our ParentLink messaging system could have a ParentLink app and get a notification that we canceled our after-school activities if they were planning to come to a football game or a basketball game or something along those lines. And I think Joe said we had about 900 downloads. We are also continuing our Google Apps for Education. I have something, when I looked the other day, we have over 172,000 private files. Those are files that students and staff and administrators have created that are private that are in the Google Apps environment. We're using it pretty much, what's the lowest grade we use in Google?
Third.
All the way down to third grade. Like I mentioned, we are doing some e-reader expansion at our junior high school. E-books have been something that have challenged us since the first time we said ebook. And we are deploying a new software package called Overdrive as a ebook management system, very similar to what the Brooks County Public Library Systems are using. And the fun of PIMS and state assessment continues. This year, the state promised some relief, moving from the 29 PIMS extracts down to six. But basically, they've gone to six, six ongoing submissions. And we will, when we count all of the ongoing submissions, we'll still be in the low 20s, 21, 22 submissions. We are also managing the federal rights data collection and just lots of big data. So the data that we have is pushing so many, in so many directions. As you see our report card that the state issues every fall, that's based on all of this PIMS data and a lot of the assessment data that we're, you know, helping to kind of bring together. And Bill may touch on it in his report, but I just wanted to say we've just wrapped up our first semester of our STEM honors intro to engineering design class. And I believe they're serving the students to kind of see the continued interest in the course moving forward. We are in the planning phases of offering Principles of Engineering, which is the second level course for next year. With that, do you have any questions for me? Dr. Benner?
If the proposal for next year to distribute the computers, not only to the ninth graders, but also the upcoming 11th and 12th graders, that's three times the number that you face this year. Is that realistic in terms of your staffing and...
We're, we're working on coming up with that, that phase in. Our plan at this point is to do the ninth grade families, when they're doing their ninth grade orientation day. We're going to also do what we've, you know, take some of the things that we've learned this year to help, you know, we sent out a signup genius with offerings for set win sessions for being run. And I think that really helped to steer families to pick a time that worked for them. We had at least 95 percent.
Yeah, I think there were 16 total families that didn't show in all those nights.
And our, our plan is to start getting the devices so that they'll be here in early August. And then we're going to start building that schedule of days and times and opportunities for folks to come in and get the devices. And even, what we found now is we, we have students that enroll, you know, out of the blue, and we have our computer aid who's up to speed. We have an electronic version of our course documentation. Students can go through that. They fill out the insurance paperwork. We had also a very high percentage of insurance, probably 90, like, less than 10 people didn't opt into the insurance out of the whole group. So it was, it was a really high percentage. But, you know, I think people really like the opportunity to come and see us and talk about it, parents to get a better understanding of what we were doing and how we were providing these devices. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a lot, but it's something we just have to get through.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Joe, what does it entail preparing the seventh and eighth grade classes to get ready to...
It's really just discussion. I mean, I think that is our next, with, with the overhaul of the junior high schedule that's being discussed and looking at, you know, enhancing, adding 65 minutes of math every day and some of the online resources, I think that's, that's our next step is to go seven, eight.
Would you be using teachers in the high school to bring along the teachers in the junior high in terms of how they adopted their teaching style or approach or...
We, one of our next steps of our high school steering committee is to actually start inviting junior high teachers to come up and join us during that steering committee. So yes and no. They do, they are different, but we would like to do that, yeah, absolutely. I'm looking to take a group of high school teachers to a Google conference in April. And I was going to invite maybe one or two junior high teachers as well to start developing those communication tools and try to bridge that gap. I guess it's something we can definitely do.
Thanks.
I mean, what's happening is, you know, we've talked about a high school one-to-one for so many years. Now we have ninth grader with the plan is for ninth through 12. You know, as that's happening, the same economies and benefits that we see with technology would help the middle schools. And, you know, Wilson, after their first year, was it even their first year, after they implemented their ninth grade, next year, they brought in sixth grade?
Six through 12, I think, is what we're at.
So they're, I mean, Hemphill, my, my seventh school district is starting a one-to-one, starting in fourth grade next year. So that they're, you know, they're starting in the lower grades. You know, I think we have definite benefit to get the senior high done first and then move to the junior high seven, eight and evaluate other, you know. Like I said, we have iOS devices in the, in the elementary schools. And that really meets a lot of the requirements. A lot of teachers are getting five or six devices that they put specific apps on and rotate the students through and some of their kind. So that's working for them. I, you know, I'm interested in seeing how my son's one-to-one goes. My son will be a fourth grader next year, and I've had a year of the year next year, so.
Yeah, and she was collecting.
And he already had it.
I know that Pat's waiting for her Chromebook for the board right now.
I got mine. No, I have one of them either. But I'd like to ask you, we had our workshop meetings down at the VOTech Center, and we saw some of the technology that they have and they're using, and I guess with the engineering unit, Dr. Martin.
Yeah, drafting and designing.
It was more drafting than anything else, was related.
Yeah, draft.
Would, would any of that ever work with the STEM program here in the...
Oh, I, I mean, if you, you should come and actually see our STEM classroom at the senior high school. It's, we've, in a year, we've gone from like not knowing what was going on in ninth grade preschool, we had some computer apps and we had some tech and it was more of a survey class. Now that classroom is really an engineering classroom. They've got 3D printers. They're just, they're using the technology to really taking advantage of the Project Leadway curriculum and doing a great job so far.
So that they can get what they want right here, what you're saying?
Project Leadway is a very specific curriculum. I think it's an entry point for some of those things that might be the next steps for some of those students. Some students may never go to career in technology and they have a good enough opportunity to, to see a full, a full course of classes, starting with IED, which is just an intro, problem-solving type of course. Principles of Engineering is a very physical kind of capital engineering, introduction to a lot of the more elaborate engineering. Then we move on to...
Computer Integrated Manufacturing, potential aerospace engineering, there are all kinds of possibilities.
And, and it, and the top end course, or the, the capstone course, is an AP, will be an AP course by the time we get there.
Yeah.
It's an AP level course and it is a, it's a project-based course where they're working with universities and they're building car, race cars, and they're doing all sorts of really cool high-end stuff. So the Project Leadway curriculum that we're part of has, it has enough, you know, some people may supplement or complement that with BCTC courses, but we have a very good program here for STEM and engineering.
In some of those BCTC classes, they were, that we went to look at, or also do enrollment classes with GRAP. So I think, you know, that's sort of the direction we're heading in with some of the Project Leadway courses.
Right.
Now, as I recall, last year, there weren't too many girls in the STEM program. Are we working on making it a little bit more interesting for girls to maybe pursue some of these programs?
Well, I mean, that's a good question for, for Mrs. Rockland. I mean, we have a female STEM director, she's, so she's supervising the STEM courses in the district. We have a committee that Dan has been working with of local business folks, you know, men, women, middle engineers. I think we're creating a culture where it's very open. We're moving our courses out of the basement. One of our courses will be out in the main structure of the building by the office. So it kind of gets the mystique of everything's in the basement, so there'll be more accessibility, availability, visibility. I think when we compare our percentage of women, girls, to other districts, we're much higher.
Yeah. I had the opportunity to go out to Project Leadway's summit in Indianapolis in November. Wonderful place in November, Indianapolis. And I got to speak to people who've been working Project Leadway program for 10, 12 years. And I, one of the specific things, I went to several seminars specifically targeted for getting, you know, young ladies interested, not just in Project Leadway, but in engineering. And in every case, and those people that I spoke to in the program, in, in existing established programs, I told them we had 84 students in our first year of intro to engineering, and we were brand new to the program, 14 of whom are girls. And they were astounded that the number was that high. They said, you know, the real proof will be how many do we have in the second year of the program, going on from, you know, from intro to engineering design into Principles of Engineering. After they've finally seen what it is, how many of them continue to that. But they felt that the numbers, especially for a first-year program, were exceptionally good for women. So it's not that we want to, you know, rest on our laurels, but we're certainly going to, you know, keep working at it. But typically, 5% is what most people are seeing, and 14 out of 84 is significantly better than that.
Do you folks have the infrastructure that you need for this technology, Brian?
We spent time before our senior high one-to-one, building the wireless infrastructure of the senior high school. We have, this year, we retrofitted the junior high school. We also increased wireless density in all of the buildings. What you find is devices like iPads and iPods don't have the distance to really reach out to a long-distance access point. So we had to put more density into the buildings. So that said, unfortunately, when you're building these wireless networks, you know, we've now built out a full 802.11N infrastructure to handle, which was the most current wireless infrastructure a year ago. Now, 802.11AC is the newest iteration of wireless. And what's happening with wireless is the radio is getting much more dense, so it's reducing in size. So again, you've gone to one access point per classroom in the senior high and junior high. The elementary schools, if, when we plan to move to AC, will have to do some more wiring to accommodate moving those access points. They also are higher throughput. So this is a gigabit of throughput. So if you have 30 computers hopping on this access point, it's sharing a gigabit of data transfer. Now, we only have 400 meg's to the internet, but, you know, it's still now being carved up amount around, you know, 3,000 devices in the district. So it's, if we want to go to AC, those devices go to 2.2 gigs, then you have to increase your, increase your density across the board, switches, you know, edge, core, all around. So we do have enough to handle. And that's the beauty of the Chromebook. The reality is, it's not transporting a lot of baggage, it's not doing Windows profiles, it's not syncing a lot of that stuff back and forth every time you log in or every time it boots. And the updates are, you know, like 18-second updates, not three hours of Windows updates every Tuesday. So we do definitely have the infrastructure for what we're doing.
My suggestion is make sure you communicate with Mr. Chapina if you ever feel that there's an infrastructure issue. I mean, get out in front of it.
Yeah.
Because once we're gearing up all the technology, we want to make sure that it's fully applicable.
The Fed just made a recommendation that for every thousand students, you have 100 meg's of bandwidth. So we are, right now, we went from, believe it or not, last year, we had 50 meg's of bandwidth, but this year, we have 250. So our plan is, the IU is negotiating with a new vendor for B-rate. Our plan, our hope would be to move to 400, so we would be in compliance with the 100 meg's per class of students, so.
I was reading through my H and P P A, oh, yeah, PSPA, and they were talking about schools that will, they awarded schools for their tech integration. Now, I must say that I didn't understand three-quarters of the last 10 minutes of your conversation. So I was curious though, to see where we were relative to that level of warrants recognition, statewide recognition.
Statewide recognition? I mean, there's lots of sort of independent accrediting. There are some individuals in some districts that do a very good job with integration. You know, again, I know, I can, I can tell you, I know other IT directors who are Apple distinguished educators and who are Google, what's the word, Google...
Certified educators.
Google certified educators. So there's all sorts of different feathers you can put in your hat. I think with integration, the work that we're doing right now, Dan, spent time, why don't you talk about it with the...
With Google?
No, with HEAT.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the things, we, we wanted to level and see where our teachers were and just gauge our levels. And we gave them an assessment, the HEAT assessment, which is a leveling assessment of how our, our knowledgeable our teachers are. And it gives us then an output of where they are and what levels of integration they need. And we're right, I mean, we kind of have a bell curve, quite frankly. We have some people right in the middle, the majority of us are kind of in the middle where we're using technology. We're not just changing it from a blackboard to a whiteboard and just doing the same thing. We're doing a little more advanced stuff. We have some people on the very high end where they're really integrating stuff and they're pushing it far. We have some people that are a little below that, that aren't just transferring the stuff from paper to digital. So we're working on, you know, working, taking these high-end people and bringing them down to lower and working collaboratively to bring them up. One of the things I did is I got Google certified and looking to try and get some more teachers Google certified. And there's a, a national conference where you go in, you solicit, and you send all the work that we're doing in the school to Google and they pick, I think it's 50 people on each coast, 50 on East Coast, 50 on West Coast. And I was, last year, I was in the top 200 based on what we were doing, and I sent them everything we were doing. So I'm hoping this year, if we apply again, that we might be able to go to that and send some other people to that and get recognized for that. It's really, we're trying to keep our focus fairly narrow. I don't want to sell Google, Google, it's more of that, the tools that Google offers us are allowing us to further the education of students. So we're, I'm trying to keep us in that kind of realm. There are other things we can do to, you know, go out there and solicit in organizations and, you know, sell our, what we're doing. We definitely do that and get some more publicity. I think if you look around the district or the county, I think we're, probably put us in the top three of what we're doing. And not just what we're doing, but if you look at the impact of what we're doing, you know, we can, we can buy a million equipment, everybody can have an iPad. We're talking to other people in my business, you know, the districts, I think our impact and our educational impact is higher in some ways than in others with Chromebook. There are some people that I think use Windows machines and asking, you know, how often you using them and how they have a problem with them. Quite frankly, we haven't had infrastructure problems with the Chromebooks. I mean, I can tell you how many teachers have come to me, like I would, and say, you know, this is a lot easier than I thought. This is great. Like, this is, I expected this to really be a pain. And they come to me and, you know, and they're like, yeah, I, I want more. This is really working well. I'm stunned how much time it saved me, how much more time I have to teach with the kids and how much more efficient I am. So, but it's something we can look into, you know, to get more recognition for it, absolutely.
We're, we're also trying to get our teachers, you know, really to that second level where they're utilizing transformationals and that, where they're actually, you know, really just throwing everything out, starting, you know, at a different, at a different level. That's a hard thing to do, you know, in our, in our, the time we have and with, you know, the fact that Dan has to deal with K-12 teachers, mostly during the day pushing in, some early dismissals, you know, some in-service days during the summer. So whenever we can get people, we really try to. One of the things is, you know, if you look around at Wilson, you know, I hate to use Wilson as a model, but, you know, Wilson is a year ahead of us with the, with the Chromebook adoption. After their first year, they hired four more technology integrators. So they pulled four teachers out of the classroom and made them technology integrators to do what Dan was doing and go out and just push into those classrooms and help because that's really where they'll start seeing, and will start seeing the success. So I did put an additional technology integrator like Dan into the budget for the upcoming year, so hopefully we'll get through. And that's really, supporting the machines, but it won't be found out, supporting the machines has been very minimal. It's really getting Dan out, getting time with the teachers, getting them comfortable and helping the students to really use the technology.
I think last week, I got a kind of, I was working with a bunch of students that were just average students. They weren't a special group of kids or anything. And I said, you know, Mr. Wilczek, we're getting Chromebooks next year. Can you offer some summer classes for us to come in and learn about them? I was like, wow, you're asking for summer school classes? This is the first time I had kids do that. I said, yeah, sure, let's, let's do it. And I said, and I answered, honestly, you guys, you know, you're going to be at the pool, you're going to be having fun, you really going to come in and spend a day with me? And they said, the kids that want to learn this, yeah, they will. And then there was, you know, I asked a group of 25 kids and about 15 of them said, I'll come in for a day and I want to learn about it, you know, because I know it's something that our teachers are saying we have to use and we're using more. So I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I, I actually can understand that. I think there's something very compelling, but if you get into it, there's something really compelling because it's, there's so much unknown. It's like there's an endless path to somewhere. And, and there are a lot, there are also competitions too that we could get kids into.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we looked at, next year, I'm going to do something with, it was a Day of Coding, or it's a WeVideo really, something we did, kind of, I talked to some teachers, we did it with some honors kids this year. But I really want to expand that out, kind of make that a day. We're also working with a product called WeVideo, which is part of the reason to create multimedia projects. And they're, they're willing to come out and, come out and develop, like, almost like a video fair for us and kind of promote that to the public. And kids excited about doing public service announcements or just kind of creating, presenting their creativity. And the winner of that thing goes to the national conference with WeVideo. It's a company that got a lot of money from private organizations and nonprofit to build this educational tool for creating projects, multimedia. So it's pretty neat, it's a great company. And we're really happy with the product so far. So it's something that I'm going to look into as well.
Well, maybe we should have a summer school.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think one of the interesting drivers about this, and I think you'll see it in through, is as a teacher, when you get a group of kids that's already had one or two years with these machines, it's amazing what they bring to the table and how they actually demand that these types of things be done. It's really, it's really a cool experience. As we move through this and the kids get them and the ninth graders move on to 10th grade, you're going to see, you're going to see some really, you're going to see some really great things happen. As far as that video thing is concerned, the tech school did a public service announcement and it was a competition for a company. First prize was $25,000 that they brought back to the school. So there's, there's interesting opportunities there.
Do you need anything from us, Joe?
Do you have, continue the report?
I'd just like to ask you a question. Are you done? I'm sorry, I was...
Well, I was about to wrap it up, there's got the high school coming in. Go ahead.
I have one more question. With the STEM program, do the students eventually then decide that maybe their, their thing is technology and in 11th grade, they emphasize that, or do they just keep on going with all the four subjects?
Well, we will have, well, the, the STEM Project Leadway curriculum is a set curriculum that we will have courses for. I mean, science, the other coursework, you know, they may take more emphasis in math and do, you know, AP Calc or something along those lines, but the Project Leadway courses have a set curriculum and, and we're entering our second year and we will be entering, offering our second course now. So students would have a path to follow through the four years.
So they would work all four subjects? I didn't know what, how many...
I think you missed a way, maybe Mr. Kane will have something to say about the opportunities for the students. Is that good?
First of all, contrary to anything you may have heard, Mr. Dean did not injure his shoulder carrying his Chromebook around. It's an over-injury to that. And I'd like to thank whoever made the agenda for putting Joe in front of me because he just made my presentation much shorter. I'm going to start off, and as always, we're going to have all the administrators participate in the report. I'm going to start by talking about a bullet item I put down as curriculum review. Back last June, when we had the four act 80 days to work with, and I have to say thank you very, very much to Julie Klein, also to Dr. Davies, we initiated with the, with the departments of the high school, a curriculum review process. Not that we want to rewrite all the curriculum, but what we want to do is make sure that our curricula is current. And so through the, the professional learning communities and the early dismissals, our departments have been looking at all of their curricula, trying to see what, what really needs to be refreshed, what's in good shape, prioritizing, deciding, okay, here's what we should tackle first. And it's not all about just conforming to the common core. It's about preparing our kids and making sure that they're getting what they need to be successful in college, to be successful in a career field, to be successful, you know, when they go off in the military and pick a special area or something there. So this is an ongoing endeavor. It's not something that we're going to do just this year. As a matter of fact, we're going to scratch the surface this year, mainly identifying where those needs are and then addressing, you know, formulating plans to address those. The next step of which is actually the curriculum council, which comes up next week, that the department chairs are preparing, just a status update for each one of their departments. The next bullet item I have there is the one-to-one technology implementation. I'm not sure what more I can tell you, other than I'd like to point out that, and again, thank you here to Joe, to Dan, to Joe Calamito. and again, thank you here to Joe, to Dan, to Joe Calamita, to all of the IT people. But the more Joe talked about the one-to-one implementation, the more he used the word teacher and the word student and the less he used words like Chromebook and bandwidth and those things. And that's, and part of the success that we're experiencing so far is, is thanks to their approach. That it's not about technology, okay? It's about students and how they learn and teachers and how they can take advantage of technology. That has been Joe's focus from day one and it's something that our teachers appreciate. One of the biggest changes we've seen, again, going back to those For Act 80 days in June, we spent a full day, Jason, Jeff and I, working with, with Joe and Dan and Joe Calamita, we spent a full day working with the teachers, letting them get their hands on the Chromebooks, looking at different applications, talking about, okay, what would your goals be? Your first goals, when you have a ninth grade class and each one of them is holding one of these Chromebooks. And it's amazing where they started and the level of comfort they have now. Joe talks about getting them to that second level where it's, they're truly integrating all this technology and taking advantage of it. Well, the first step has to be getting them comfortable. And I would say they went from a state of paranoia, to be honest with you, at the beginning of that first day's work in the Act 80 day, to a, to a level of excitement at this point where teachers who don't have ninth graders are now starting to look forward to their kids having Chromebooks. Because the more they talk to their colleagues who have primarily ninth grade classes and have these Chromebooks to use on the spur of the moment. I was sitting in a ninth grade class probably about a month ago. It was a, it was a social studies class, 20th century American history class. And Mr. Burkhart, the teacher was dealing, I'm trying, can't even remember exactly what the topic was. At this day's game, one of the students asked a question that was sort of related, but not exactly on topic. And Mr. Burkhart said, well, let's just, let's look it up. And within seconds, he had three, four, five kids giving the input from what they had found, doing a very quick search, a Google search. And that's what's happening. It's becoming natural to those teachers and ninth grade students whose kids have them in front of them all the time, to use them as a tool to become more efficient. Not more efficient just in how they do their day-to-day job, but more efficient in how they're getting the learning across to the students. On the other hand, the students are taking to them exactly as we thought they would. It was interesting. If you, if you picture the high school, the main front doors of the high school, you come in and there's a big lobby with a carpet. We call it the fishbowl. Because once you get in, you can't go any further without going through the front office. All the doors, the exit doors are all locked. So you either go out or you wait for one of us to let you in. Well, the fishbowl is a common gathering area at 4:30, 5 o'clock, 5:30. Students who sit there waiting for their parents to pick them up after their athletic practice, after their club meeting, whatever it is. I think we may have to install some more electrical outlets in the fishbowl. They used to all sit there with their phones, playing games and texting their friends. The ninth graders are all out there with their laptop. They've got their Chromebook on their lap. They've got a textbook or a notebook next to them and they're working away at their homework. You know, and so I asked them, do you like that thing? Oh, yeah. You know, they're really taking to it. So it's becoming, much faster than I thought it would, would, it is becoming just part of going to school. Just like textbooks, just like notebooks. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dean. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McFarland, who's going to talk about the new math curriculum and some more project lead the way.
Thank you. The connection between the technology and the math is this student ownership has really increased dramatically this year. The strength of our math program has been teachers that know their stuff and teach well. We have given them, with their leadership and guidance in making the decision, the resources and support in terms of college preparatory math to have a lot of success. We're about six months in and the results at this point are extremely encouraging. We've had tremendous support from CPM in terms of training both last summer and through this year. The trainer is coming back tomorrow to watch each of the Algebra I CPM teachers teach and give them feedback from, from an expert standpoint, much more, more of an expert standpoint than my own. The results are encouraging from some of the diagnostic testing from earlier in the year till now. And I just really think it was a fundamentally right decision to help balance both the supports of teachers, guiding students, and yet giving the students the ownership and the problem solving and critical thinking in terms of the resources of what CPM provides. It was a great decision. We still have challenges to overcome because it's relatively early and a lot of next step decision-making that we will report back on. But as of now, the signs are extremely encouraging and that's, that's mainly due to the teachers and their willingness to dive in, understand it and, and really work through a promising program for their students. As far as, so thank you for that. As far as project lead the way, also, we also thank as a board for really supporting that effort as well. We got a good glimpse of what it takes from the technology side. Mr. Kane, Mr. Pitts, basically the board, the central administration. It is a all-hands-on-deck type effort to make this work. And it has been probably the most inspiring thing I've done since I've been here, seeing how it's all starting to work. We're in year one of this project lead the way effort. It is going well. We've got six sections of the introductory IED course. We're well on our way to rolling out the second course for Principles of Engineering, which is a more science and math leading course, a more application oriented. Basically what I like to say is a kind of high school level Lego kits that are much more expensive than Legos unfortunately, called Vex. So, I mean, the kids are just going to be doing the science, doing the math, and it's going to be fantastic. In terms of early successes, some of our seniors are enrolled in the Jobs First competition and that is, that is led by the IED teacher, Mr. Potter, a community member and parent named Mr. Messina, who has an expertise in coding and software through Lockheed Martin. The project is driven by a student who had a knee injury. And so they're measuring the angle from your hip to your knee, trying to assess when there's a likelihood for damage, trying to, it's well over my head, track how that goes, goes back to a mini circuit board basically and alert the coach, the trainer, the parent, the student to, okay, you might, you might be in a position where your muscles, your legs are a little tired, your risk of injury has gone up. Incredible stuff. Long story short, the momentum is building and we're really happy about where we are. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Dean for PSAT testing and some other testing items.
Mr. Dean and I are going to tag you a little bit on testing. Likely or not, part of working in a high school, part of being a student in a high school is dealing with testing. And Mr. Dean will give an update on the Keystone testing, which is always, you know, something we have to be concerned with. But prior to that, I'd like to just, just talk a little bit about PSAT testing. PSAT is a preliminary scholastic aptitude test. And it's a test that's offered to 10th graders and 11th graders. It's more important for the 11th graders, at least the high flyers, because it also is your entryway into the National Merit Scholarship Recognition Program. And students who become committed students or semifinalists or, you know, hopefully finalists do very well in terms of securing their financial aid for colleges, especially private scholarships and things like that. More importantly, it's great practice. Most of our kids, when they take the SAT for the first time, without the experience of the PSAT, it's a different animal than anything they've experienced. Far different even than the Keystone. The Keystone, yes, it's a high-stakes test for them at this point, but a totally different type of test. And so we have often felt, and I've worked very hard with the guidance counselors, to try to increase the number of students taking the PSAT so they don't walk into the SAT completely unprepared. And in my first seven years here, the best number we ever got was 235 kids. Took, 234 kids, took it last year, that's sophomores and juniors combined. Not a real high number, but not bad. This year we tried something different. The college board allows you to give the PSAT test on either a Wednesday or a Saturday. Nationwide, it's the same week. It's either Wednesday of that week or it's Saturday of that week. So we thought, well, the logistics are much more complicated to do it in school on a Wednesday, but what the heck, let's give it a shot. We did with cooperation with the teachers, very, a lot of hard work on the part of the guidance counselors. We offered it on a Wednesday and all of a sudden we had 305 students who took the PSAT. And we just returned the results to them right before Christmas and we polled each group as we returned the results and said, how many of you would not have taken the test had we used the Saturday, Saturday date like we do every year? And probably 30 to 40% of the hands went up in each group, in each of the four groups that we met with. So sometimes it's just a little thing that makes a difference. So hopefully we're going to see a difference in the SAT scores now as these kids are a little bit better prepared, have a little bit better idea of what they're running into when they go into those SAT tests for the first time. So I just thought I'd make you aware of that. Again, logistically, it was much more difficult. For a morning there, we had teachers changing rooms every period because we needed to use their classrooms for testing because it takes about four periods to do it. We didn't have a problem. We didn't have one teacher show up in the wrong place, not one student show up in the wrong place. And that's, logistically, that's, that's quite an accomplishment. Now, some more from Dean.
I was just going to say, we have one-to-one implementation and Project Lead the Way and I get Keystone exams. But it, it's been a busy season. As you know, there are really four waves that you can take the Keystone exams. There's a Winter 1, a Winter 2, there's a Spring that's done in May, and then there's even a Summer 1. We did the Winter 1 and the Winter 2 Keystone exam windows this year. The Algebra 1 retakes for those students who weren't proficient, tested during the Winter 1 wave and that was in mid-December. And then we had students that did not pass the Literature Keystone in Wave 2, as well as the English 10 and the Biology block classes that finished up in the, at the end of the first semester taking their Keystone exam just this past week. And we are, as I said to Mr. Kane, I said, I have three holdouts that I am finishing up tomorrow morning. But it has gone very well this year at this point. I have to say thank you to the tech department, particularly Mr. Calamita for his support in helping us do all this online testing. The students adapted well to it and the reports are, the students are certainly putting forth a strong effort. That is probably no small part due to the fact that for those in the English 10 and the Biology, it counts for them for graduation, which actually, I'll talk a little bit more about in a second. We've already started looking at testing for the Spring and have had some conversations with Mr. Calamita in particular and are going to do some testing with Chromebooks this week just to verify the infrastructure and make sure that if they work well with the CDTs, the expectation is that they will work well with the Keystone exams. And, you know, just trying to look forward to what kinds of problems we might have or concerns that we can identify early in advance of testing with Chromebooks for Keystone exams. So those are some of the things that we were doing with Keystone. We were also having a lot of conversation around project-based assessments. Because anyone, class of 2017 or later is going to have the Keystone as a graduation requirement, we've been looking into that a lot. I know that Mr. Kane has been certainly discussing that with principals at his principals meetings as well as Mr. McFarland and I at the assistant principals meetings and then collectively as a group talking about how they'll resolve that. The short version of that is, is that everyone has to pass the Keystone exam. If they don't pass it, they're required to be remediated and after they've been remediated, they can be retested. If after they've been retested, they still have not scored proficient, they can move into what's called the project-based assessment. And the project-based assessment is a series of tasks or almost like competency that the BCTC would be familiar with, that a student has to complete. Some of the challenges of that are is that they need to complete those modules under state standardized testing conditions. So it would be, when you go into the room, it would be very similar to going into a Keystone exam testing room. It can be monitored by any staff member of the district, but there's also a tutoring component that comes along with that. So it really has to be delivered by a content expert. So we definitely see some challenges as far as that goes moving forward in terms of being able to, A, provide staff for the, for the actual performance of the project-based assessments, but also the tutoring that goes along with it because we need that in order to be successful more than likely on the project-based assessment. So those are some referrals that we're looking at and those are some of the conversations that we're having going into next year so that we can meet those needs. And I think as far as that goes, that kind of wraps that up. We will move into school safety.
Yeah, why don't you go right ahead since we're going to split back. Go ahead and talk about the camera system.
We did have some work done in terms of the camera security system at the high school this year. Part of that was evaluation on our part as to how well our security system is working for us and is it meeting our needs. And frankly, we found that there were areas that it was lacking. We've been in communication with CIA, which is the vendor that is supporting us in that respect. And after a series of meetings and conversations, the net result of that is, is one new motherboard, two new processors and a reconfiguration of some of our cameras to make our security efforts a little bit more efficient. I should say all of that at the cost of CIA and not ours. And they, they noticed some errors on their part and so we were able to work together to get the cameras up and running. And they, fortunately, we have seen some significant improvement in the way that cameras are functioning. They're coming back in tomorrow to kind of wrap up some of the work that they needed to do in terms of configuring cameras on our monitors. And once that's in place, then we'll be able to do kind of a final assessment and make sure that there isn't anything else that needs to be, to be done in that respect. We've also added two HD cameras to help close some gaps in some of the areas that were not previously covered to help round out our security viewing around the building.
The other key school safety item that we've been working on this year, as I'm sure you're all well aware, is the traffic situation, especially in the, in the early mornings and in the afternoon dismissal around the high school. And at this point, we're waiting. I mean, the change in the parking ordinance has been approved. Signs have been ordered, I understand, so it's a matter of when they come in and when the township installs them. But we're, we're ready to go as soon as possible. I stood out there this morning. I don't, I don't know if it's because it's the first day of a new semester or what, but it was one of the worst days I've seen with the traffic out there. And it's, again, it's, the whole, the difference we're expecting with the change in the ordinance is getting rid of the cars that are parked along the sidewalk there, which then forces cars to back up in the, in the drive lane to wait to get into the cul-de-sac and then some impatient drivers then go around them into the oncoming lane. And here we have parents coming down to that oncoming lane who have dropped their kids off and are now trying to head home, head to work, whatever. I walked out at 5:07 this morning, we go to the corner, and there were already three cars parked there along the curb. So it starts early. So, and when we ran a two-day test with Officer Benson's help back in the fall, it made a huge difference in terms of sightlines and in terms of clearing the drive lanes, both drive lanes, by making the waiting lane be the lane along the curb where people are currently parking. And one of those two days, it poured rain, which is always when it's the absolute worst because I think the school buses must be completely empty on days when it rains. Because I'm convinced that every single parent drives their kids to school that day. So we're waiting and as soon as we have that installed, I'll let you know. You can come upstairs with me on the corner in the morning and see the results. Again, I'm really anticipating good results and, and if we do get those results, we're going to be really proud because the whole idea came from the student forum. It did not come from us, it came from the students.
So where are you guessing those cars are going to go?
Those cars that are parking? I'm kind of hoping we're going to see a, an increased demand for parking stickers or parking passes for the student parking lots because we have a lot of empty spaces in the student parking lots. So it's either that or they're going to go out into the community. It's going to make it a little more difficult for us to find space to park.
Which was where we, I grew up, it would just be to the police impound lot, but you know.
Well, hopefully not there. I think, I think our parking stickers are cheaper than the student parking lot.
I would think just, yeah, I would think this way. Bill, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just, I had a question. It actually works back. How, in your assessment... How, in your assessment, I mean, any more gaps as far as the cameras are concerned, or are we pretty well on target coverage?
At this point in time, I say we're pretty well on target. It won't take long till the kids point out the car seats.
Okay, alright.
There will always be gaps. As we find the, you know, the bad ones, we'll plug them, but it's the kids who find them for us.
All the stairwells coming?
They will be after, well, I guess after these last two cameras, they now are.
Fire alarms coming?
Every fire alarm?
Yeah.
No, not every fire alarm. We had trouble finding the one that went off last time. Put a lot of work on Mr. Pitts's part. He was a bulldog, he would not give up. Because when the alarm goes off, the alarm panel shows us the code, it gives us the ID of the sensor that went off, and tells us where it is. And it was on the complete opposite end of the building, could not have been further away than where the panel told us. So that'll be the next job, is working with simplex to try to better map where those alarms are, where those detectors are. Other question?
Bill, do you think the parking on the street is a function of the parking fee in the parking lot, or is it that the students are trying to get a quick exit?
It's a quick exit. It really has nothing to do with the fee. Our $10 fee is probably the lowest in the county. I know there are fees as high as $50 in some of the high schools. And to be honest with you, some of these kids walk in with more expensive drinks, probably Starbucks and Panera and Wawa, than what it would cost if they gave up their coffee for two days and paid for a bar for a year. Yeah, it's really, they perceive that it's an easier exit from the building, because we hold the lots until the bus is clear.
Yeah.
So I think that's really what it is.
Because I'm wondering, Bob, if that $10 or whatever the parking fee is, is even worth the collection hassle? I mean, it's, do you think it's worth the hassle of collecting the money and having a fee? I mean, if it was open parking, do you think the lots would fill?
You know, I don't know. At one time, I would've said yes immediately, but I'm convinced how that is, is the fee. The collection of the fee is not difficult at all. Yeah, it's, there's very little administration there. Yeah, I would like to say we had completely open parking, then all of the kids would park on campus, but I just don't think it's true.
When you say the lots are blocked to the buses leave, is there a way to let the lots go a different direction? Like on the Upper Street, then let the buses go on, you know, behind the school?
I'd have to give that some thought. I'd really have to look at it.
Again, because I know what Mike's question is. He wanted you to say they're gonna park in this drive. And I tend...
It's $10 a day to park this drive, that's just all good.
He charged my kid $10, but $15, but, you know, I...
I think what's gonna happen is the cars are just gonna come further into the neighborhood. I mean, the kid's not gonna give up their car. I mean, you're just hot, you just turned 16, you just got your car. You're not giving it up. So I mean, you know, we live with it, it's no big deal for the 20 minutes a day that it's, you know, crazy, it's just the way it is.
And not to belabor the point, but I'm one of those parents that drive either three or four kids in the morning. I think one of the biggest issues now is the kids who park their car and they just run across the street. There isn't really natural crosswalks. So all over the place, people are kind of crossing from where they parked. And I'm just afraid that someday, someone's gonna get...
Part of the change is we put any crosswalks.
Yeah.
We have curbs, we have corners. If they're not curbs, you hit the corners, then the police have to then put a jaywalking file in. But the police aren't gonna do that, because they don't have time to idly waste out there. It'd be more important for them to be at 37th Street, preventing another student from getting hit by a car, than wasting their time with a jaywalker.
And they often are at that intersection.
Yeah, so why, I mean, that's a child acting irresponsibly at that point, throwing a couple of cars.
Well, that, the two weeks ago, that was something on, turning up and happening.
Yeah, that's why I'm more concerned about that, the child there.
Other question?
Do you have crossing...
We saw a couple of bullet items here, ethically.
Can't you put somebody in a fluorescent jacket to earn community service by standing there, crossing kids? I mean...
Should be bothering you, seeing everyone's interest.
To meet that requirement, right? Give them those white safety belts on, and they're like...
I was the safety patrol.
I'll bring up safety before the next new law, and see how they react. At this point, I'd like to get Mr. Legath to come and speak about a program that he started this year that is having a significant impact, I think, on our school culture and climate.
Thank you. So I do a lot of communication with my coaches, and I wanted to get in front of the students so that I could kind of nail down, since I started three years ago, I wanted to get a grasp on their behavior, more at athletic events, being spectators, and also on the field or court of play. I wanted to improve their attitude with that. And I went to Mr. Kane and said, you know, is there a time? And I knew I couldn't interrupt academic time, so he gave me a suggestion on PLCs. We have early dismissal at 1:00, and it was perfect, and it's been wonderful. So I cover a wide range of topics with the kids, whether, when I wake up in the morning and I get an email from Dr. Weber at 6:00 in the morning on the Philadelphia Inquirer article, which are wonderful, the hazing that goes on in certain school districts, the Central Bucks West information. I go real-life situations with the kids. I, you know, explain all these different situations, what, you know, what, here's what happened here. This is the most storied football program in the state of Pennsylvania, their season's canceled. So I'm talking, and I have, for example, our football captain saying, "At this school district, as of today, your season's complete. You're done. Seniors, your season's over." And you see their eyes get big and wide and understand. I talk about, you know, everywhere you go, people are observing you, everyone knows you're an athlete, they see you everywhere you go. You know, Michael Mann, "Hey, Michael, my superintendent saw you at Giant, she told me." If, hey, if Michael Mann's acting, you know, inappropriately, she, they, she, you notice that. So just examples where, I got an email last week from one of my coaches, because I preach sportsmanship, leadership, and doing the right things. One of my coaches sent me an email, says, "You might like this." Opens an article that a basketball coach beat us through 161 to 2. I sent that immediately out to my coaches, and I said, "This will never capital happen." But these are some of the certain things that I go over with the leaders at, about 50 to 60 kids that I meet with on these PLC early dismissal days, and I've had a blast with it. I've brought in some special guests, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Dean, to talk about some current situations, so it's been wonderful. And now I'm gonna start going more sports-specific to their sports and talk about how they can better themselves with their team, with their coaches. And I then all communicate all this information with my coaches and tell them what I'm talking about, so.
So if you can imagine, 50 to 60 kids who are voluntarily staying at school after the early dismissal. So he's reaching them.
Just to me, with Mr. Legath.
Felt special.
Do you feed them?
I sometimes feed them, partly because I'm hungry.
And Mr. McFarland's gonna wrap it up to tell you about some of the neat events that have happened through the fall semester.
I'll keep it brief. Basically, the first semester was phenomenal. Some of the results of what Mr. Legath was saying, some of the changes, I think it's clear that the students are seeing that we're trying to give them every opportunity to dive into the school, both in the classroom and beyond. Some of these events listed here, it's a common theme. Students taking the leadership, supported by advisors, supported by coaches, and supported by administrators. That's the way we want it to be. Students first, put them out there. If they really reacted well, a couple highlights would be a different band festival that just oozed this unbelievable music out into our hallways on the weekend and a couple days before. The Latin Club food drive, where literally one or two classes donated 1,000-plus cans of food, and we surpassed our goal by 2,000 cans, over 10,000, 12,000 over the goal of 10,000. 700 wishes were granted the week before Christmas, before the holidays, and out of 1,400 students, so one out of every two students had a wish granted to them, whether it was me pushing them in the hallways for the next class on a wheeling chair, or a blizzard from DQ, whatever it was. I mean, that sort of spirit is definitely pervasive, and it's been, it's been a great year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. This is Scottish. You know, I look forward to this every year. Just like a doctor's appointment and a coin.
Unit folders, parent's home, and then, as always, I provide detail on revenue and expense by non-debt. I'm just, I want, I'm doing a short presentation just to remind you that we are doing preliminary budget. I thought on February 17th, this provides flexibility because we can spend the process applied for exceptions. See later, we do, I estimate that we'll qualify for the special education exception and the pension exception. Since December, when I presented, there, we've been fleshing out different things, specifically, we extend the second year, we've been looking at discussing positions, new staff requests. Tonight, really, the only major changes I'm presenting are related to the refinancing, because that's a big ticket item, and I, later on, I wanna make a suggestion on how to incorporate that into the preliminary budget, the savings. So looking at this year, we adopted a budget with a deficit 2.2, and we used some fund balance. Now we're down to about $98,000. And really, the biggest driver has been the savings in the refinancing that has taken place. Couple words about real estate collection rate, 97.4 is Exeter, that's the largest municipality, so that, very, that's tremendous. Last year was 96.5. So those things are reflected in these numbers. In the revenue, we, I'll remind you, we received Ready to Learn, more than we budgeted for. And again, expense, I'll list later what drives the 1.5 million reduction. The principal and interest, the debt, just to give you a perspective, we have it declining, going back up. These are years where we did refinancings and had significant savings. Here we are in 1415 and 8.4 million. But our true level of debt will spike back up to around 9 million in 1819, but then it does go back down to 8.6 million, and it'll stay at that level for a number of years in 1920. The refinancing from 1011 through 1718, these are the amounts that we have, the district has saved. In these years, the money has flowed through to the fund balance, which, why, that is pretty healthy fund balance, one of the significant reasons. This is the savings this year, next year, and this is with Step 1 and Step 2 that we've done so far, the bank note and the recent bond sale. This is how the savings will play out in these years. So, you know, do we let this flow through to fund downs, to unassigned fund downs, or do we acknowledge that this is an opportunity to possibly transfer to capital reserve or to keep it in line item for debt payment, rather than just not letting it flow through? So going back to the 1.6 million, I went through these last month. Here again, here's the largest driver for, you know, closing that shortfall. Looking to 1516, which is the preliminary budget at this point, 3 million deficit. Any minor changes in revenue related to reimbursement on the debt service, you pay less in debt, and reimbursement in the state will be reduced as well. We won't know what the governor's budget will be until March, March 3rd is the presentation. So this is another reason why we do a preliminary budget, because we don't have the information on what our state funding will be. So it's keeping all options open. And again, I am reflecting in this number, the savings related to the refinancing of the two recent issuances.
You have anything of separation? You have anything in terms of the...
No, I don't. And at the end, I have a slide at the end to talk about what the board would like to do with that. So again, looking at expenses, over $4 million. Revenue, without any tax increases, only, it's in $900,000. Revenue, the $920,000, the tax increases I mentioned, this is in large part the reimbursement from the state for the employer contribution. We receive at least half of what we are required mandated to pay. The rate that we contribute at is 25.84, up from 21.4% from this year. So that's driving that increase. The reason the local is less from year to year, the estimate does incorporate the 97.4% actual collection rate. I'm budgeting at a 97% collection rate, so that's why that's... And showing over the period from 2010 through 1516, really, this last column, our local revenue, 1.9 million. We had increased mileage by approximately 1.6 mils over these years. So that's local, is what has driven that increase. Here, we have to net these two numbers, state and federal, in 1011, those were the hour years, and it was just a shift in between state and federal. So the increases there are related to social security reimbursement, retirement, and some increases in debt service. The expenditures to get this $4 million increase from the estimate today to what the preliminary budget looks like at this point, and again, you can see its wages, contract increases, new staff, benefits, the drivers, retirement, along with healthcare increases, and some property increases, which relates to the one-to-one, to roll it out to three other grade levels, as well as those funds in there for new telephone systems for those that are very old and won't be serviceable soon. That's in this category here, in the property, $568,000 a year to year change.
What was the telephone system?
The cost, $320,000, that was one quote that...
We still have two quotes that are coming in.
And the one-to-one, the line item is $375,000. Again, just giving you a perspective, I probably put this slide in too early, but looking at expense since 2010-11 to 1516, the benefits, 66% increase, $7.4 million. Wages, over those years, a 5% increase. I mean, that was a concerted effort of not filling positions, wage freeze, holding the line on contract increases. But the benefits and the pension is really driving that increase.
So is the majority of that pension coming in?
Yes.
It's not like all of a sudden they have brand-new, new healthcare benefits or more access, it's not, it's really just, like, they don't, it says benefits, but they're not, not, pensions not benefit, but they're not getting more pension.
Right, right.
It's just we're paying.
It's the contribution, the employer.
Same level.
It's not like all of a sudden you have everybody in the car and driving around here and there.
Right, it's the mandated rate to fund the... Right, it's the mandated rate to fund the unfunded liability.
And did you, did you factor any savings from potential retirements or not yet?
No, I, February 1st is the deadline, there's one on the agenda tonight. I do not factor in any savings at this point, because I don't want to piecemeal it.
Well, next month will be real numbers, so you better do a fair amount of math.
And again, you know, property increases, you know, technology initiatives have driven a whole lot of debt increase, which, which, at the reports tonight, that's a good thing. Charter services, charter school would be the driver there. Professional services, you know, as the specialized population needs increase, speech therapy, OTPT. These are the staff requests, and again, I've not, we're discussing them. A couple of these that were originally submitted have been removed, but as I state here, the discussions are ongoing. And as you can see here, the position that Joe referred to in Dan, the instructional technology specialist. Now, this does include benefits, and we emphasize that, a whole set of benefits. The wage piece is about $400,000 of this total. Because of the cost of healthcare and the pension obligation, that really drives up the cost of new staff and current staff, I like to imagine. So again, we are evaluating all these. And we are discussing other possibilities. There's discussion about reconfiguring special ed, administering a block, so maybe doing a little bit of horse trading.
And which category was the position with Mr. Ray?
Technology, instructional technology specialist.
Okay, but which category there are various technologies. Oh, thank you, I think it's time to wait.
And I want to point out, some of these are not new, but reinstated position. For example, the custodian. Over the past few years, when the position would be vacated, we wouldn't fill it, but we're feeling the pain in some of these areas.
Is that an accurate number?
For... With benefits? With benefits. Right. With benefits. Right, as I said, the, this, 4,000 of that is, the benefits can amount to, you know, when you're talking about a 25% contribution rate on, on wages, the wages, it's $12.50 an hour, full-time, 2080. The rest is really benefits, benefit of two-person coverage, X-Wax, dental, social security, retirement.
And what are the consequences of not, what have we, what are the consequences we've suffered because of not filling the custodian position?
Something's not...
There's been a lot of absences this past year, and there's been a lot of shortages, especially in the high school and the second and third tier, so.
But what are, what are the consequences of that, what happens?
Pretty much, I mean, that's, it really, and you know what's not fair? I think sometimes we end up putting more work, more room assignments on, on people to try and make up for somebody that's not there. And you know what, you can't do the work on the share.
Do they clean every room everywhere?
Classrooms?
Yeah.
Well, there's certain, there's a list of certain things that have to be...
Yeah, I still don't know with the level.
We're actually going through, we've evaluated that February we're having Sunday tonight. We're going to do a job analysis for each of the custodians and see how many custodians it will take to clean our district at whatever level we decide. With a computer program.
Joe and I have a plan, we'll clean the classrooms as often as the kid cleans every room.
In that case, lay all the custodians off, we don't need any.
Back when we were still using chalk, where I worked, the guide was, if you couldn't see the chalk for anyone, you weren't in the chalk tub.
Back when I was in elementary school, we did the sweeping of the floors, we had custodians, so what do I know?
What did Sister Mary say?
Sister Mary said, if you didn't do it, you were staying here at the school, so we did. And the clappers.
So going back to that $4 million increase in expenditure from this year to next, not to oversimplify it, but it is pretty simple. Contractual wage increases, new staff requests, 1.2 million, healthcare, 8%. The trusted, adopt a resolution to not exceed 7%. I'm going to incorporate all of those benefit and wage changes at a future presentation, because that only amounts to around 30 grand, so. The employer contribution rate, $1.6 million. The one-to-one and the telephone system replacement.
And that 1.6 million, do we get half of that from the university?
Yes, yes. That's where I showed the increase in revenue. And debt service, it's per the schedule. Significant savings for 1415, not as much in year two. Any presentation wouldn't be complete without the pension contribution rate increase summary. And looking at 1516 through 1819, it's about a $2 million. That budget now will increase by that much, so it will keep growing each year. And right now, committed and assigned is 1.3 million. So as we look at the proposed final budget, I mean, at future budgets, we're going to have to find room in the budget to meet these mandated costs. And this is a net number after reimbursement.
That's almost four mils a year, just our portion of the pension in 2015. Said that not a single company would have been bankrupt in 2015.
The act one index, 2.5% for Exeter. This state is 1.9, we get a bump because of our age ratio. 2.5% increase in mileage would yield 0.78 mils, or about 1 million, a little over 1 million in additional real estate tax revenue exceptions, which I estimate we can qualify for, special education, 400,000, pension, 460,000. That equates an additional 0.62 mils. So adding up the current mileage of 3125 plus 0.78 plus 0.62, the max the district could increase is 4.5%. And these, again, through the preliminary budget process, adopting a budget that shows the need to increase above the index allows you to apply for exceptions, to possibly use them as part of the proposed final budget. So going back to my comment earlier about the savings in debt service in this year and next year, and building it into the budget. Should we consider including it in our expense as a transfer to capital reserve? Which, as a practice, if there's excess in the general fund, school districts are allowed and do move money to capital reserve to fund future capital projects, pay for buses, or keeping it as a line item in debt to possibly pay off debt, additional debt. So the 368 is the savings in 1516, which I've rolled into this number, and the 330 is half of what we've saved this year. It's, you know, this is a preliminary budget, trying to, really trying to get the board's feeling on that, even going into the proposed final. Because these are savings on debt that was issued for projects. Should we utilize it for capital projects going forward? Rather than, you know, or, you know, you can keep it in the, the general fund balance, but thinking to the future. In my mind, you know, targeting capital projects or paying debt might be the way to go. That's my point. One thing that I've added here is the one-to-one. In 1819, all the Chromebooks will be four years old, one grade level, you know, might be five years. So we're going to have to re-up, and then Joe was talking to me today about the junior high initiative. So these are things that are on the radar, that's why I put that in here. And things will have to be fleshed out as we go through the final budget process. So 4.5% maximum increase keeps you, well, this is over 8%, the way the budget looks at this point. We couldn't take both exceptions, this has both exceptions, and this is the index increase, which would give a 6% unassigned fund balance. The reason I mentioned capital is looking at what we have now in general fund commitments, capital reserve, Awatton, the new money issued last year. And what happens each year. This is the estimated cost for this year, 2.5 million. This 1.7 million is what we spent to remediate or finish the Awatton site work. We don't know what we're going to get back from that, hopefully a good chunk of it. We don't know when that's going to happen, but just to point out that that fund, there's, essentially, we've depleted most of those funds. When we do get funds back, you can, when you have an excess from a project, you can use it to pay off debt related to those, the issues, for small capital projects. The resolution was written such that you could use it for that as well. As far as the new money goes, it was either for a transportation center or other capital projects. Or, you know, a combination of improvements to the current site, bus garage. So this all has to be fleshed out. And again, the cost for capital for 1516, $2.4 million. And from which fund we will complete the projects, that will all have to be worked out. But what's included in here is replacement of tanks at the bus garage, in addition to the pumping station, because they've exceeded their life, the pumps, they don't make parts to repair them anymore. The tanks are installed in 1TB, so that's something that we are faced with, and they are, there's a placeholder in here for it. In addition to the track, 227,000. So as you see, as, you know, the schedule that Mr. Pitts puts together each year, here's what your balance is. 2017, it's down to 3 million, you know, if all of these projects actually come to fruition. We could save some capital dollars by doing a restoration versus a replacement of roofs. So it could be 4.3 million versus 3 million. But then each year going forward, excluding ADA projects, these are the amounts that are slated. Again, saving on junior high and the rain restoration, so those are two big projects for future years. But just to illustrate the need to look forward and plan for capital projects, by the end of 2021, there could be $300,000 left in capital. That's a snapshot, a lot of things will change, but I wanted to put that out.
And when you put this together, do you make an assumption that, say, the revenues in the state is going to change? Or it'd be a mild, a modest increase, or do you make no revenue assumption as you put this together?
For 1516?
Yeah.
The basic subsidy is the same, transportation, the same. Social security, retirement are driven by, you know, wages, both wages and the retirement, the mandated contribution rate. Everything else is, remains flat. I assume ready-to-learn will be part of 1516. The basics, the basic guidelines really, we don't know.
Yeah.
And the mention specialized, the same as the current year.
I'm not hearing big things, and that's one, I guess, one of the...
Right, you know, there was an article that, you know, the state's budget, their deficit, you know, the shortfall is, it's a, it's a real problem.
Couple of them, yeah, and I think it's more than that.
Well, it's my understanding that basic education hasn't changed for multiple years, is that correct?
Right, and for the past few years, it has been at around, for us, the $8 million level. So it really has not...
The first year, the Corbin Fund, we didn't do a lot of different things. Basic education needs down in the early years.
Well, there was a lot of, the issue with the hour and the SFSF, it was federal fund and versus state fund.
Right.
So it really has not increased.
So that's, that's not a way to present it.
Since 2008. And I just show 10 and 11 here. It's really been around the $8 million level. 1011, basic subsidy was 7 million, but we have a million down from federal, SFSF, state fiscal, state legalization part. So now we're at 8.1 million, so it has not... And this is just the, the time, timeline of events.
And do you have any estimates, too, with all the different mandates that have been put on us, since 2010, with like the Keystone, the, you know, more and more technology? Do you have any idea how much those mandates, probably from the state or the national level, has, has kind of cost us in, in real dollars? Yeah, it's something that we have to actually itemize. They, they're coming at us so fast and furious, it's hard to even keep up, and some of it we don't even know. In fact, I did try and tell me, you know, now that the, we, we, the, 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 the past trash, so now, or...
Right.
So, now, teachers are going to be, you know, paying every three years for their background checks, you know, their...
Not just teachers, every, every...
And everyone, every employee in the district, and every district, and there's no money for that.
And the HR office has to track all that, so that involves more work. And that's why we're trying to sort of beef up that area, as we've discussed before. So, some of those things, we don't even know how much ultimately it will cost us. We can project what we think it will cost us, but we tend to actually go through and see how much work is gonna be involved in this. Because there are reporting mechanisms that are gonna be put in place. We don't know how much time it will take to prepare those reports, how many reports would be necessary, you know, what the cost will be, once, when some of the collective bargaining negotiations try to get the district to pick up some of these costs rather than the employee, which I, I think is bound to happen. You know, we really don't know the full extent yet for some of the new things that are coming at us. Another thing is the, the mandate for remediating students who don't pass the Keystone exams, things like that. And having to do the, having to monitor the projects for the project-based assessments of kids can graduate, that's gonna require additional manpower. And I know Mr. Payne has, you know, has itemized that in his request for more staff. We, we need to apply with this. So, how, how many people is it gonna take to, to do this the way, you know, the state has mandated that we have to do it? So, you know, we don't know yet. We're just trying to figure it out. Once we go through it for a year or two, then we'll, okay, we, we really need to do this, you know, cost of remediation programs, materials, books, whatever, computer software, all of those things.
And all the data collection, and the, and the, and the, and the data, and everything else.
And the data collection, the number of PIMS reports we have now compared to when they first started, I, I mean, I don't know, is it like 10 times more than it used to be? It seems like...
Yeah, man, two full-time staff members who, 20, you know, every day, they're doing PIMS data for federal data.
Yeah, just for PIMS alone, yeah, we have two full-time staff members with benefits that we had to add just to provide the data to the state, make sure the data is correct and, you know, and accurate and so forth. And two full-time people just for that. So, I mean, I have tried many times to sit there and try to itemize, but every time I do that, then a whole bunch of new ones come in, and those numbers are no good anymore. So, it's like a moving target. It's constantly increasing.
And when you think of costs, those are such, you know, maybe unnecessary costs. And if they're so important, and the state thinks they're so important, or the federal government thinks they're so important, then they, in my opinion, should click the box for us, because otherwise it goes all on the local tax.
I know. I know. You're absolutely right. We all know that. We've all talked to legislators about it year after year, and they all nod their head and say, oh, we understand, that's, right, that's really rough, we have to do something about that. And then the next year, we come back and we have the same conversation and...
And do you have pressure?
Yeah, one final item. Step three of the refunding, Jamie Schlesinger has... I'll just, this is just a copy of what he handed out on page... So, Tompkins List is willing to hold a proposal for step three. They had provided a proposal on step two, but the bond sale really went very well. So, now we have to move, move ahead. The board has already adopted a crambo's resolution to take care of step three, which is the balance of 2010. So, the Tompkins proposal is to stall 1.9 fixed. And that's on a copy of what Jamie had provided when we were evaluating Series A in December. So, according to his calculations, 1.9 fixed for five years, assuming the variable 3.25% on the back end, is giving savings around 520,000. Assuming the cap of 3.8%, that's the cap, would be about 421,000. And there is the ability to prepay with this option. They would, very interested, they want to lock in rates, and they're willing to settle, leave to settle till March 31st, which reduces the negative arbitrage because they're closer to the call date. So, that's why the 520,000. The other option again would be a bond sale. The current market is indicating savings around 580,000. So, we need to give direction, board needs to give direction to which option to choose at this point. Now, I guess the question becomes, what's the value of the prepayment option, the ability to take some cash and pay off some debt?
I don't think, right now, I don't think there's a huge benefit of paying additional debt, paying 1.8 or 2% debt down. We have, we have a budgeting issue, not, it'd be similar to an individual with tank credit cards that are maxed, and we're able to pay a small percentage of one credit card down. You still have your payment in your first, your first year, but I, I don't see it helping tremendously. And again, one of the, the bonds, what's the date, three?
Well, the bond, the, as soon as that we could do anything, would be 15 days from the 13th of January. So... Arden?
The bond market, I mean, you look at it next week, and you're saving more money with a, with a bank note. And I think as far as paying the debt down, I'd be more interested in my understanding is we can't do it, we'd be in a position to be able to restructure everything and ease the payments out, but the way it's gonna explain to us anyhow is that that can't be done. So, I'm not sure that it would help considerably to pay that particular debt down, down the road, based on what we're...
So, is the direction to pursue another bond sale? Looking at the difference between 580, and that's based upon today, or 520, assuming 3.25% variable on the back end?
Well, the last time we were, we were able to go right up and sold at the time of sale to make the decision, correct? Was it we were forced, no, no, it's intense, that we, we made the final decision. My understanding is we were basically juggling until we knew what was best for Dr. Miller's one.
That's right. But this, their proposal was on step two, but they're willing to hold it for step three. So, are they willing to wait until, I'm, I'm sure they would be, it sounds like they are, but I'd have to ask Jamie that question. And do, do we want sale now? We, of course, you, I'd have to find out whether we would incur another rating, or if not, another fee for rating.
Like, three weeks ago? How much did it change?
Homework titles.
It's just, yeah, just more what we...
We're waiting for more information on Jamie and Jamie.
Well, I'll find out if we can do the same thing. Do a bond sale and see what happens. So, I'll give more information and communicate to the board, because I think they really wanna, I don't know how long this is gonna hang out. Although, if they're interested, they will.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to look at the, the fund balance again. And on page six, it looks like we've done a good job this year of moving from a projected 2.269 million dollar deficit to a 2.172 surplus in the fund balance, right?
Or, actually, this is the shortfall.
From the first column to the fourth column.
This is the shortfall. This is really the change, you know, from here to here.
Oh, our, so our projected deficit this year is 97,000 dollars.
Right. And of course...
That could change.
That could change.
Yeah. But then, then you go to page 15, which shows a fund, a deficit of 427,000, which I think is based on your transferring money out.
Right, which is a, would be a budget line item. It's a use of funds, just like debt payments, budget reserve, there are other use of funds. And that's why included that they are indicating, you know, should we transfer some of those savings out for future capital projects, 30,000, which takes from the nine to seven to 427.
Yeah, I, I guess it strains my logic to create a larger deficit by putting money in a different account.
Well, we're not exceeding our annual expenditures and... It's, from my perspective, okay, we've saved interest. Are, do you want it, you know, should we really be using it some, you know, for capital projects in some small fashion going forward? Because I'm concerned about the balances going forward. And trying to, you know, address different things. And also, you know, can it be used to help some improvements at the transportation center? Like I said, we've depleted Awatton, although we hope to get a big chunk of that back. But it was really just, I wanted to throw that out there.
Any other comments, questions? I can't. Getting to the agenda. Open comments from the public, are there any comments from the gallery or the board? Questions, comments, complaints? Nothing? Moving on then, we have three sets of minutes for adoption. We'll entertain a motion, an acceptance, a...
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll take one of the last questions. We didn't pass the regulation last month. Did we send that out till like this week?
No, we're going to send it out later this week now that the new governor is in place and so forth, because one of the, one of the people that is, is together is the governors.
Did you fill in the blanks there that you had to...
Well, the only blank we're still trying to, to deal with is, we filled in the blanks except for, you know, how much, you know, what the effect of the lack of funding has had on us. So, we have to, you know, come up with something there, and that's, sort of goes back to the question, you know, how, how much has, have we been affected by? A lot, but, you know, to actually be able to, to put a number down. I'm assuming they want a number there, is that your assumption too?
Yes. Or at least a narrative.
Some sort of narrative, yeah. I mean, we could describe how many teaching divisions were down, and, you know, I was thinking about it in both ways. But anyway, it will go out this week. We have it ready to go, except for that line.
I think we probably had to increase fire signs at the elementary hall, or the one in third, last one.
A little bit, a little bit. Not, yeah, not much, but a little bit.
Do you have to write accordingly?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments on the minutes? Are you not all in favor of adopting the minutes? Please indicate somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. Treasury report?
I believe the Treasury will report as stated in the, the budget under, what, what the...
That's important.
Treasury report.
I have a second.
Still moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. If they were adopting the report, please indicate somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. Business functions, Dr. Murphy.
Under 5A, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve budget transfers for the month of December 2014 in the amount of 26,396 dollars. That is an attachment, 5A.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion. All in favor of the budget transfers, please indicate somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries.
Under 5B, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors award the bid for two buses, the Brayville Body Works, the lowest bidder. The total cost for the two new 77-passenger Bluebird buses is 184,350 dollars. The trade value for the 1998 and 2001 buses is 17,000 dollars. The net cost of the lowest bid is 167,350 dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I'm gonna recommend that the Board vote against this for the same reasons that I have the last couple of years. I think with the precarious budget, discussions that we're having, I understand upgrading the buses, but I think we have to, at some point in time, start making them last even longer. And this money can be spent, I think, in some better places.
Mrs. Guy, do you know the age of the bus? We know the age of us. Do we know the mileage on this bus and what the current state of these buses are that we're removing out of our service in the near future?
I don't have the report here with the mileage. If you want me to do it, I can. But they're traded in when the median's price becomes prohibitive, okay? Start to incur problems on a very regular basis. And the mileage is probably at least 100,000, off the top of my head, at least.
Is there, Anne, is there, is there a safety concern using these? Obviously, with the 5 million dollar slap in the face last week with the bus horn, we're looking at these. So, I'm a little concerned about approving, buying new buses when I'm quite sure where we're gonna put them. So, I guess my question is, from a safety perspective of the students, are we looking at an issue there? If these, is this something, is there a workaround? I know we do have some extras, so I didn't know if...
The safety, safety meaning...
I mean, are these, are these buses in disrepair, that they cannot be used? Because again, I don't want to just throw 200,000 dollars out the door. Again, where are we gonna put them?
Well, this is...
Yeah. I mean, I think we...
No, I'm talking about just putting additional money into the box.
I think, well, I'm physically opposed to vote, Joe. My question would be more along the lines that if it's just a matter of a plus for the maintain, you know, we actually own the bus. They own the maintenance, so we're buying parts. I mean, and we're trying to close gaps. You know, not that I'm, I want to interfere with Frick's operation, but I can see where a tip's coming from, that, you know, if there's a way we could budget this.
You thought of it here.
It might be, you know, if there's a way we could band-aid it for another year if there's not a safety issue.
There, we might want to have Mr. Wegman in to table this issue, because our reimbursement from the state is also based not upon the mileage on the bus, but on the age of the bus. And this may have gotten, these may have gotten to the age where we no longer get a contribution from the state on the maintenance and upkeep of the bus, which, what I think I would entertain a motion to table in this to bring in Mr. Wegman and give us a supportive brief.
Well...
I think it's good for the...
Well, the challenge there is ordering in February. There's no guarantee that it's gonna get here before the start of school.
I would like to, I'd like to move that we pull this motion off the table and then bring it back up next month with Mr. Wegman.
Second.
Motion and second to table. Now, the discussion, the, Anne has pointed out that we might not have by next year the date. Consider that as adequate justification for spending money that we would not spend or losing money, but we might be able to recoup from the state.
That's, that's...
And even if it goes out of service one day, the next bus goes in the next day?
Any other discussion on table in the motion?
Um, I, I just have a question. You said that it wouldn't be ready, if we go to February, it wouldn't be ready for September beginning of school, but it might be ready in October, but have they all gone to, or do we have to wait an entire year?
Well, it's not only being delivered, it's the model that you want. The orders can be taken by December for the year model that's being bid on. So, I guess I'm trying to, you know, I mean, we're replacing buses that have reached their maximum, you know, useful life. We're getting a nominal amount for trade-in. So, we have to keep a fleet that has spares that are in good enough condition that if they sort of break down, they can go out and do what they need to do. So, I guess I'm concerned about the risk of, you know, delaying, replacing the buses that really have...
How did the delay affect the bidding process too? Is there a time limit on bids?
Usually, yeah, usually.
Right. And especially in the year of the model that we're bidding, and the orders typically are placed by the... typically are placed by the...
So we could jeopardize the bids?
I believe so.
And we could cost even more.
We delayed it since December, because we were evaluating the bids. We wanted to review them closer, so...
I personally would take the risk. I think it would be due diligence to have her come in and explain if he says we can extend the life of those particular buses. If we can't, then we can make that decision, if you let us know about the reimbursement from the state. All those things, I, I would be in favor of table, so we could discuss in detail.
And doesn't Mr. Wegman usually have a schedule for, you know, replacing of buses due to age and, and mileage and all that? So he would not recommend us to get new ones if he didn't...
That's right.
This is in accordance with that schedule, but the issue for the board at this time is tabling it until we can get Mr. Wegman in. What I might recommend is that we can consider the workshop as a voting meeting for this particular item next month, so that we can get the briefing from Mr. Wegman.